All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the September 4th meeting of the Board of Alderman with all this need to order, please, if you can stand up for the pledge of allegiance, followed by invocation from Alderman's lawn and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our God and our Father, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, our big brother, our Redeemer, our salvation, Father God, your only begotten, beloved Son, were born of a Virgin Mary, Joseph, with his wonderful father, who you're allowed to be crucified, died and buried, and three days you raised your son from the dead. You sit at the right hand of you making an interception for old sons and rest like us. God, we thank you so much for Jesus. Most of all, we thank you for the presence of your Holy Spirit, but thank you for the angels, that you're allowed to stay encamped around us all day long and allowed us to make it back to this appointed place. We ask you that you will please forgive us of all our sins, Father, known and unknown, seen and unseen, and blot out our transgressions. Again, we ask you that you will be in the midst of this mayor of this board, the vice mayor of this board, and all the department heads, but we ask you that you will fill this place with your Holy Spirit. God, that you allow every decision that we make glorify you, regardless of what people say. Let your, let our decision make you happy and then help the family happy. We thank you for being our God and we your servant, being our Father and we your children. Thank you for controlling our destiny, not leaving us in the hand of no man, but thank you for allowing the voters to vote for each and last one of us to put it in this position to do what your, your will, not our will. And Father, at the end of the day, we'll be careful to give you praise and honor and glory because of who you are and where you are. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here this evening. We will move on into the action items of the agenda. We have, we have to approve the official agenda, we have consented items, and I have changes to make with, with the board's indulgence. Under human resources, which is G, item one, item nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13, we're going to pull and do a little further more on those, doing those items.
Mayor. Item one?
Yeah, Alderman, am I not correct? Mr., where's Mr., Mr. Nash, Mr. Av, Navin?
The health insurance?
Yes, we don't have the final documents on that. I'm sorry, I...
I can...
Okay.
Alderman, we sent back revisions, slight revisions, to Blue Cross and Blue Shield on their third-party administrative services contract, where we asked them to strike several indemnification provisions. We sent those back last Wednesday, and we're waiting feedback from them on that.
Okay. Does this impact the proposal that we built our budget around?
No, it shouldn't, because it'll, it'll go forward at the next meeting.
Okay.
Sorry, didn't mean to pull that one as a surprise, but I thought that had been communicated, my apologies. So, yes, to continue on, item one, then nine through 13.
Nine through 13, you put in all those?
Yes, pulling, pulling all of those, they are, they are somewhat related, 10 through 13 are related, and item nine stands on its, stands on its own, so a little tweaking to do on that. Do we have any, anyone on the board have any items that they wish to add to the consented agenda or to discuss before we adopt an official agenda with consented items? Mr. Carver?
I'd like to add, under Parks, item number two.
Parks, item number two. Right. Considerations request for extended event hours?
Um, yeah.
Any objections?
Objection.
Okay, I have an objection, that will, that will remain on the regular agenda. Any other items for consent?
Mayor, let me say something for the record, I want to make sure some clarity on that. I need to, gentlemen, normally, let me, I need to clarify, it doesn't come in in the straw, they need to know Saturday, let me just say that I, I am not against this organization. This organization has a very good, good purpose, it does a lot of great things. What I want to make the record clear, the board has a policy in place that requires a cutoff for 10:00 PM for all persons or entities that utilize our sportsplex, and my philosophy is that I want to treat everyone who is similarly situated similarly. In other words, I do not want to extend any requests beyond 10:00 PM, so therefore, in order to be consistent, I am against extending any requests past, past 10:00 PM, because I were to, vote to extend this particular request, then I'll be given this group preferential treatment. So, I just want to make it clear that I'm against any extension beyond 10:00 PM. So, that has nothing to do with this organization, I support this organization, but there was just an article in the paper on, on Saturday that, from the work session, that I had voiced opposition to this, but I'm just against the extension. I think everybody needs to be out there, out of the building, under hard and fast rule at 10:00 PM, so I'm not against this group, so gentlemen, from one, that's why I just wanted to say that, I need that clarification, but you know, that's fine, whatever the board wants to do. I yield, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, also, on page three, under Board Business, item C, discussion of appointment to the Housing Authority with Mr. James Henley to have reappointment.
I'm sorry, you wanted to do what, put on a consent?
Yes, ma'am.
We have two applications.
Got two.
Do, well, does anyone want to put that on consent? I'm sorry, that's... None? Okay, all right, thank you, it will stay off consent. Okay, anything further? All right, we have, need a motion for the approval of the official agenda with consented items, and the change is made.
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Little, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Walker. All those in favor, please sign if I'm by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Agendas with consented items approved. I will read the consented items. First is consideration of the minutes of the August 7th, 2018, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Second, under Mayor's Business, consideration of landscape management agreement with S.G.K. Landscapes, Inc., to begin September 1, 2018, at a cost of sixteen, $1,654.20 per month. C is the approval of the funding of the game-based shuttle service shared with the greater Starkville Development Partnership for providing smart bus service to and from various locations throughout the city of Starkville for those attending the MSU home football games. Under Airport, we have a request approval to purchase a Ferris 61-inch mower at state contract price of $6,058 from the October County Co-op. Under Code Enforcement, we have consideration of travel for Jeff Lyles to attend the Mississippi Code, Association of Code Enforcement Educational Conference in Hannesburg, Mississippi for training, October 10th through 12th, 2018, at a cost not to exceed $450. Under Engineering, we have consideration of adoption of resolution and acceptance of the bids for STP-7101-00004, LPA/107116-701000, Louisville Street Multi-Use Path Project from Lynn Lane to Emerson School, in accordance with the Mississippi Department of Transportation Local Public Agency Guidelines and Procedures and Authorization, for the city engineer and mayor to proceed with contract execution with the selected contractor. Under Finance Administration, we have consideration of the, of the approval of travel for Deputy Clerks LaShonda Wilson, Jamaica Smith, Mary Ivy, and Leanne McGar to the 2018 Deputy Municipal Clerk Training Places to be held with advanced registration, travel, and hotel costs at various times and locations during September and October, not to exceed $700 each. Under Fire Department, we have a request permission from Mark McCurdy to attend the Mississippi Fire Investigators 2018 Fall Seminar from October 10th to the 12th, 2018, in Pearl, Mississippi, with advanced travel not to exceed $520. Under Fire Department Number Two, request permission for Steve McMullin to attend the International Code Council Annual Conference Code Hearing and Expo on October 21st through 31st, 2018, in Richmond, Virginia, for an approximate cost of $2,045 to be paid from state rebate funds. Under Human Resources, we have Number Two, request approval to hire Nicholas Bean, Raheem Crewman, and Dalton Daniel as certified police officers for the Starkville Police Department. Number Three, request authorization to hire Tora Norheim and Alanya Stevens as part-time receptionists for City Hall Front Desk under the direction of the Finance and Administration Department. Four is request authorization to change the employment status of Denise Marvel from part-time to full-time with benefits in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Five is request authorization to advertise for a part-time maintenance worker in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Six is request permission to allow the Starkville Fire Department to begin the promotion process to fill positions of captain and battalion chief. Seven, request authorization to advertise for a temporary full-time systems help desk administrator in the Information Technology Services Department. Eight, request authorization to hire Levi Thompson as an entry-level firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department. Under Parks, we have consideration of the approval of the Facility Use Agreement with Starkville Soccer Association for the use of athletic fields at the Starkville Sportsplex. Number Three is consideration of Parks Recreation Program that includes travel to Bradson, Missouri. Under Police Department, we have consideration to declare a 2006 Lincoln Navigator VIN Number 5LMFU27526LJ20393, obtained through a declaration of forfeiture through the Office of the District Attorney, Surplus, and to sell. Under Sanitation, we have consideration to advertise the annual purchase of 12,000 rolls of garbage bags. Under Utilities, we have request authorization to begin advertising for bids for the Roundhouse Sewer Project on September 6th, 2018. And Number Two is request the board accept TVA-prepared Joint Use Study and Authorized Agreement Contract to be effective October 1, 2018. And that concludes the consent agenda items, unless I forgot something.
Thank you, Mayor.
Share. You're most welcome. All right, we now move to announcements and comments, and I have introductions to make, but I also have recognition of some folks, and actually, I think, Mr. Logan, I'm gonna let you handle that, since you were intimately involved in that, if you would please. As, as a bit of background, these folks were kind enough to help us with George Evans Park, and they made a huge difference in how it looked and, and what was done to improve it, so I'm gonna let Mr. Logan carry on from there.
Sure, he, he took care of most of it, but yes, as you can see, we would like to show the, the board a few photographs of the event day and, and take, take the opportunity to thank some very, very key individuals and organizations that were involved with this. So, yes, we, they, this cleanup organized by Keep Starkville Beautiful, led by Amy and Counterman Emily Corbin, organized this cleanup at George Evans Park. It ended up being hosted on August 18th, backed it up due to weather, and then on the 18th, ended up having just a, a few issues, but we made it, we made it, and most important thing. So, definitely want to recognize Keep Starkville Beautiful and these organizations here. As you can see from the first two, it came just a little bit of a rainstorm, but that didn't stop anybody. Volunteer staff, residents, all did brave the morning rain shower to make the improvements at George Evans Park. It was a great day, and you might recognize the gentleman front and center on that last photo on the right over there. Alderman Walker, thank you. And photo credit, I want to make sure and point this out, Faith from Starkville Daily News is the one that took these photos, so make sure to give proper credit there. And this is really what we wanted to highlight, just some before and afters, which you can really, really see the difference. It, it, it can't be overstated just how much of a difference it made over there, it's, it's a beautiful area landscaped around that picnic table, a lot of sod added, and, and all that material you see there was actually donated by the, by the folks we'll recognize here in just a moment, so a lot of donated material, donated man-hours, volunteers, residents of the area, all that, so just, just a wonderful day, and wanted to take the opportunity to recognize those involved. So, Mayor, if you'll come down, grab a photo with the plaque, and we'll let everybody out.
You need to know for sure that Emily and Amy are both city employees.
Yes, yes, yes. So, first up, we'll do Lowe's, so Lowe's Home Improvement with Matt Layer and, and, Clint, you are, all right, so Matt Layer and Clint Gannon from Lowe's Home Improvement are here.
Yeah, this is for y'all.
I love that many of them.
All right. Very fine.
Thank you so much. It makes a huge difference.
Y'all just spin.
Here we are, here we are.
Emily, Amy, yep.
Thank you so much.
And of course, Southscape, which you may recognize this individual, but tonight, he's representing Southscape, so Mr. Trent Alms.
Yes. Thank you so much.
One more.
Yes, I got a second. Okay. All right.
And last but not least, Four Seasons Lawn and Landscape with owner Cliff Crowell.
Good job.
And again, it's been said, but do a, one of the thank, special thanks again to Keep Starkville Beautiful, which of course is Amy Counterman, Emily Corbin, who are both city employees in community development, their dedication, hard work on this, they were, they were fantastic to work with. We, the Parks Department, we're just one of many involved with this, they led it, spearheaded it, and we're very fortunate to get these local partners to be involved. So, again, you, you can see the results, they speak for themselves, but it was, it was a great day, and thank y'all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And let's acknowledge Amy, she was in a car wreck earlier today and has suffered whatever slings and arrows that went with that, but she came back tonight to be part of this, so we appreciate that. Thank you. All right, and I have the privilege of making introductions of new employees, which is always a wonderful thing, we love bringing people into the, into the family. So, let me start with firefighter Patricia Cartwright, and I'm so excited. All right, Patricia Cartwright is originally from Garland, Texas. She graduated from Jackson State University with a bachelor of science degree in psychology and is also a graduate of Mississippi State University with a master's of science degree in clinical psychology. She's a certified personal trainer as well as a fitness trainer at Get Right with Cartwright. During her free time, Patricia enjoys a variety of activities, including playing volleyball, soccer, swimming, and spending time with family and friends. She also enjoys spending time with her border collie pups, and Patricia attends Pine Lake Church. Welcome, Patricia. We're delighted to have you. Sounds like some family in the room. All right, next we have Ben Oswald, who is a new police officer with us. Ben is from Amory, Mississippi, and is a graduate of Amory High School. He received his Associate of Arts Degree in Criminal Justice from Idowamba Community College. Prior to joining the city of Starkville, Ben worked for Cooper Tire Company. When his time permits, Ben enjoys hunting, fishing, playing golfing, spending time with his girlfriend Megan and his three dogs Archie, Lily, and Rebel. Ben attends Cornerstone Church. Welcome, Ben. Thank you. And we have another police officer, Mr. Will Simon, who had the pleasure of swearing in not too long ago. Mr. Simon is from Houston, Texas. He graduated from Madison High School and attended Houston Community College. Will previously worked as a police officer for the city of Columbus before joining the Starkville Police Department. During his spare time, Will enjoys cycling, bull riding, and spending... Bull riding. Okay. And spending time with his wife Ebony and their daughter Sanaya.
Yes.
Did I pronounce that right? Will and his family attend Vibrant Church. Welcome, Will.
Thank you.
Back to that bull riding thing, you got to be careful with that. All right, and I believe that's all I have for Mayor's comments. Do we have anything from the Board of Alderman? Mr. Carver?
Got a couple, other than just being a college town, getting the opportunity to go watch, I think you were there, Starkville High Friday night, play, play West Point, and also Starkville Academy, and just the, the high school programs here in this community are well-known throughout the state, so it's, you know, just sitting there on a Friday night, I guess, going into football seasons, and this is exciting just to watch these two tight matchups and turn around Mississippi State win. And then secondly, just in, just again, publicly acknowledge Mr. Johnny Moore's family, and just sitting there, went to the funeral today in visitation, just thought of someone who was able to get through. I know in the terms we've been up here, got probably more done as an attorney than, than any other attorney that I know of, was very, if you want to talk about economic development, quality of life, that is a, a gentleman that was exceptional in what he did, and I know he also has other projects in the works. And then I guess anybody on this table knows, anytime that somebody's got enough gumption to put their name in the hat and run for elected office, I think everybody needs to do that once in their life, but just, just think about that family this, in this time of their law, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carver. Anyone else? Any other comments? Alderman Walker?
I just, picking up on the, the football, I would just like to thank all the, the city services, from the sanitation and the police, the fires, it was a big weekend in town for our first football weekend, like you said, it started on Friday night with West Point Week, and just a, a great game, and then on Saturday for getting people in and out of town efficiently, and everybody doing your jobs and doing them very well, so it makes us look good when we do that. We got about six or seven more big weekends to, to come, but I thought we got our, off to a really good start, so well, job well done for, on everybody's part.
And it does take everyone, so from sanitation to certainly police, fire, all, all of our departments did, did very, very well. And just a point of note, I was at the, the Starkville High School ballgame, and I was walking in, and I looked ahead of me, and there was a very, very tall gentleman, it was Coach Morgan. He had, he had come to the game, stayed through the whole game, I'm hoping he's recruiting from the Starkville High Group, so anyone else?
He's still on the team, so he can be there.
And he can be there, and he was there, yes he was, yes he was, so kudos to him, and he's very engaged in the community, we're delighted to have him, so. All right, if there are no other comments from the Board of Alderman, then we'll, time for citizen comments. Do we have anyone who would like to, to speak to us this evening? If so, you have three minutes, and we should make any comments you'd like to the Board of Alderman. Mr. Turner, you've got on your Citizens Academy.
Yeah.
Sure.
Our greeting to the Mayor and Board, to law enforcement, to the NACP president. The citizens have a few concerns, they've been seeing metal, uh, things in the street, and they were just wondering what that was all about, they see it on different parts of the street, and they wanted me to ask about that. Uh, the second traffic light, uh, going down 25, um, still need to be looked at with the traffic and stuff that we have now. And the last year, to all citizens, we have military, Air Force, everyone, even the Green Beret. Uh, please don't provoke those people, because if they snap, uh, you probably won't have time to cry or anything, so let, let's, uh, respect the military. Uh, they go over and fight, then they come back and try to leave, so let, let's try to respect them.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. And I'll take the, the metal holes that you were asking about, those are the locations for the bollards that we're using for events, you, where you put a, a metal sleeve down in there, and it allows the crowd control, it helps us with crowd control, okay? All right, do it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vaughn, my Alderman, Board Seven, and all the rest. Okay, number one, I, I've been getting tons of phone calls, same as you are, the key thing about it is make sure it's fair treatment for all city employers. What you do for one, try to do it for all, keep it fair. Just like Mr. Perkins said earlier, I mean, Turner Perkins, Vice Mayor Perkins said earlier about the events, if you're gonna have events, let them, but then in your, if I'm not mistaken, you do have it so that you can request an exception, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and, and honor, think about honoring those exceptions. And what you do for one, you don't have to do for all, it depends on that organization or that person. Uh, boards, uh, Mr. Carver, I know he got the package just like everyone else, if you got new people that want to be on boards, don't discourage them by trying to put the person who was on the board on the consent agenda. You need to listen to them, because if you do that now, you're gonna do that for all boards, and people ain't gonna apply for boards. We need people on all boards in this city, a mixture of people. So, just think about that. Now, if one person, no problem, but if you got more, you need to at least listen, I don't know if y'all gonna do it tonight, but open your eyes, open your heart, and listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Mayor, may we recognize?
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Taylor. Just one thing, I'll make sure that still don't go unclarified, again, let me just say this would be real clear, as to the matter of the city's event policy, the city's policy is that everybody has to be out of this sportsplex at, at 10:00 PM. And the reason that I do not vote for an exception to that, if I vote for one, then if I later vote against another one, then someone is gonna say that the Vice Mayor was not consistent. Now, I know that, you know, if someone just want to explain his or vote, they can do that, but the best thing means to have a hard and fast rule, and therefore, if I stay with that hard and fast rule, no one can say that I was inconsistent. So, what I do is, I mean, regardless of who it is, whether it's A through Z, if they come here, and this is a great organization, I mean, I support this organization, they give scholarships, they are very good people, but the bottom line is, if I vote against this good extension, I'm saying that I want to keep everybody at 10 o'clock, so as long as I'm on this board, as long as I'm on this board, I'm gonna be consistent, and of course, my colleagues, they do what they think is best, and, and they do a good job with what they think, but as long as I'm here on this board, I started off being consistent over 25 years ago, and I'm gonna end that way. And this is just good friendly conversation, I will make sure that the record is good, a lot of people are listening in the paper, report this out, and I don't need no misunderstanding or anything, so I will make sure that I'm gonna continue to vote to stop it at, at 10. So, if it's organization A, B, C, D, E, F, G through Z, I'm gonna stop it, and so that's, but the board, you know, within its prerogative, allowed that exception to be there, but you know, of course, I didn't vote for that, but of course, democracy and the majority rule control, so what I need to do is just continue to vote against any exception, that's all I wanted to say, but I'm not against this organization, a good organization, but I'm just for that hard, fast rule, 10 o'clock is time to leave the premises. Thank you, Mayor.
Fully understand, but just think about it, that organization is a great organization, they give thousands of scholarships to high school students.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you. All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comments?
I got to say hello to everyone, all my Alderman, I would just like to say, I'm Dora's eyes, and everybody know that, but I'm coming to you tonight to tell you that last meeting that we had, when Mrs. Lita was up here to have that, you know, that friendship day that you always have, I want to know what time is it gonna be over?
Eleven.
Do we have any certain set?
Eleven. I think it's eleven.
It's gonna be over at 11. Okay, but the look is gonna be the one on all day long, and I'm worried about the children, but you know, that's always, I'm gonna say what I have to say. We came up with all this, you know, littering and everything, but this is gonna be very perpetual for the children, because they're right there, and some of them don't have parents with them, and I would just like to, you know, speak my concern about that. And also, animation, y'all talked about it last time, but I would like to know, you know, before we get started, it's gonna be put on the website and quiet you. know, before we get started, it's going to be put on the website and quite true, the little study is going to be put on there. I want to know how many people are going to be brought in from certain areas and what dish are they going to be in? Which one going to have? Board Seven, Board Six, Board whoever going to have? This is going to take a lot, you know, to do, but what we have to do to annexation. And I'm still trying to study some of them. And I would like to tell you that Mr. Jeremiah Dumas is here tonight. He's getting better, but he said he needs some money from y'all to fix my road over Roland Hills so they can come up through there. So I'm asking y'all before we get up there. And this is serious. I'm serious because my road is not, you know, good enough. Well, the bus do kind of pick me up in the very middle of the day. I have to call to, you know, by day and advantage. I do and they have very good, you know, for doing that. But I want to know when my road to my sidewalk going to be fixed. And I've been coming up there forever on Roland Hills to act here. So I just want to know because, you know, I still have to go to the grocery store and do different stuff and I could have a bus that I could have and I get somebody to push me down here, you know, it wouldn't matter. And I'm being serious because this is a serious situation. We need money. We need money to fix the road. We don't need to pass down no little loss. I hope we don't. I hope we do what we have to do and that's come over and fix some of the residence areas up. We're doing just the thing. Thank y'all.
Ms. Isaac, are you asking for like a, was she asking for like a demographic survey of the last vote in the election?
No, 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 no. Associated with the annexation, worried to be.
With the annexation, okay.
And that is as yet to be determined based on what is annexed.
Yeah, I just want to give a few comments to know about it so we can open up to you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to make citizens comments? All right, I will close it as citizens comments and we will move to two public appearances. First, we have Mr. Former Alderman Jeremiah Dumas, who is currently in charge of the Smart Bus System for MSU. And he's going to, I think he's provided us with a fold out or handout here at your table and he's going to provide us with some information. Which I asked him based on Alderman Carver's request at, I believe, the last board meeting or so.
Well, good evening, good seeing all y'all. I know y'all have a full agenda and so I'm going to move through a lot of this pretty quickly because this is a recap of a lot of what we talked about in February when we were here for our annual public hearing. So just to remind all of you, and you do have a presentation in front of you, but we are funded by the Mississippi Department of Transportation. We receive 5311 rural mass transit monies that are generated through the Federal Transit Authority and we are a sub-recipient of the Mississippi Department of Transportation. Currently, all local cash matches provided by MSU Parking Services. And just to give you an idea on cash match, when we use operating capital, so when we buy buses or we do other facility upgrades, buy shelters, et cetera, all that's capital expenses that are matched at 80%, 20%. So we cover 20% of that. All other operational costs that we deal with on an annual basis are covered at a 50-50 cost share. So that's a 50% coverage by MSU Parking Services at this time and then a 50% coverage by MDOT. You, the city, have provided in-kind services since the beginning. Now, you'll see two different dates in here. We wrote our first proposal to MDOT in 2012. Took us a couple of years to generate enough capital to put buses on the roads, et cetera. We went live, full stream with all our routes in January of 2014. So we use January 14 kind of as our demarcation point of where we start writing our accounting true ridership. We did have some activity before that, but we have been in operation now or receiving funds for eight years. Through these funds, we have to operate fixed and flexed routes. Those are technical terms. Fixed routes meaning that we have to provide a schedule of route and fixed stops. Flexed routes are similar to that. Pair transit is one I'm going to touch on a little more here in a minute, but that is required. We have to have what's referred to as a complimentary pair transit program that is within one and a half miles of our service area. So we basically draw a line around where we go. We draw a mile and a half buffer out. And if you're within that geographic area, you qualify for pair transit services. And then we are required to participate in regional and statewide coordination. In February, I was here to talk about four new goals that we had. One was to approve efficiency. Two was to increase customer service. Three was maintenance, maintenance and maintenance. I mentioned buying buses in '12 and '13. We put a lot of miles on those buses every year. Maintenance has been a big focus of ours and then also to buy and purchase new buses. So we've been able to already accomplish some of those and we hope for more of them.
Can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
How many years do you get out of a bus?
Well, it depends. Some of them have warranties that are five years, some of them have 10-year. Your heavier duty transit buses, which is what we're trying to go to, are 500,000 miles or 10 years. So unfortunately, we have acquired through, well, I need to be careful. State contract in Mississippi only allows you so much in terms of the quality and durability of heavy duty transit vehicles. There just is not a high demand. So we've had to use those buses as the vehicles that we have and they are not as heavy duty as what we would require given our ridership. So that's a long answer to a short, but it varies.
Okay. There might be an average in there somewhere, but okay.
Well, there's an average too. For example, on some of our city routes, we have gas vehicles now that have a lower lifespan, but they're smaller in size, lower capacities, a little less heavy duty impact on our road system. So they're a little lower. So this is a map of our new service. All this service was proposed in February, but it is now live. We started in August, so we have new routes that service, two new routes that service the new Walmart. We have a significant change on our Board Town South. We've added some new stops throughout the city. And so we're seeing good success in these changes. Still some learning that has to go into it, some of them on campus, but we're rolling with it, pun intended perhaps, but it's, there's been some good changes in here that have really increased our efficiency. So to really get to the meat of what the mayor asked me to talk about, fixed route ridership, again, there's that January 1. We now have over 3 million riders. In February I was here, we had right at 2.7 million. So we've now surpassed the 3 million threshold. 735,000, so almost 736,000 riders of those have been what we refer to or own our, what we refer to as our off-campus route. So that's the routes that are primarily in the city or only in the city and then those that might touch to and from the campus, that might have one stop on campus as a hub. And then we've now had over 5,000 riders to the Golden Triangle Regional Airport. Pair transit is one of our most proud, if you will, most needed sectors of what we provide. This is calendar year '17 and year-to-date '18. But since January of '17, we've had 5,713 unit trips, so we're averaging about 291 monthly trips. We have 63 qualified riders and there's a pretty lengthy application process associated with physician, with an interview with us, with an application with us. We're averaging now two new applicants are riders per month. We have over 1,700, almost 1,800 lift trips. And this is a trip where we actually have to send an ADA chair or an ADA compatible van to the individual's home and pick them up with an ADA lift. So when you talk about the quality of life and you talk about the need for service, that's 1,795 of them that have happened in the last year. And we're doing this only with one wheelchair van and one ambulatory van. So one van that is just riders only are those that are mobile and then one wheelchair only It's not just service to us. We participate in annual activities. We've been recognized by the National Federation of the Blind as one of their shining stars in terms of the services we provide from the pair transit standpoint. We are actively engaged in communities and I told you in February that I needed to get Ms. Isaac on one of this because of this gentleman that's right here on the next slide that received tickets this past year. But we actively do our part to be an engaged part of this community and to provide a service that we see as, and this is one of those lift chair aspects of it, that we think has a real quality of life aspect to it that is not otherwise provided in the community. So why am I here? Well, I'm here to ask for money. I've given you a hint of this over the last couple of years and now's the ask. Currently, we are budgeted in our fiscal year '19 Smart Proposal with MDOT at 1.4 million in total cost share burden. So again, that's capital and daily operational cost. You know, if you just do the proportion to off-campus ridership, if you just look at what that is, that's 25%. So it could be 350. Another metric that other municipalities look at when they look at how to proportion cost share with different agencies is vehicle miles. By far and away, our greatest vehicle mile area is in the city of Starkville. But this is the eighth year of award and we've almost spent $10 million in annual operating capital and annual operating cost with the only local cash provided is by Mississippi State Parking Services. Why is that important? This morning, I got up, turned WTVA on, our WTVA, and they were doing a live shot of one of their reporters on the new bus system in Tupelo. Well, that system in Tupelo is a new, obviously started today. It's 100% funded by the city of Tupelo. Oxford is a 50-50 cost share, so the city provides 50. The city actually writes the proposal and administers the grant farther than campus, but it's a 50-50 cost share. The city of Jackson, J-Trans, 100% city. Coast Transit, now they have some city and some county operating costs that they have in cost share. Hub City in Hattiesburg, there's 100% city. So we're the only system in the state that has any significance in ridership the way that we do that does not receive any local cash from local government, city or county. And I can tell you, MSU Parking Services is under me. I can tell you from the budgetary standpoint, for us to continue to grow, for us to get past that one ambulatory, one wheelchair accessible van, we have to begin to looking at diversifying our cost share in order to do so. So I appreciate your consideration and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Couple of questions I had on my disperity. I think the mayor said that you didn't ask for the 50,000 or did you ask for 50,000?
We did ask for it. I wrote in a letter for the 50,000.
Okay. Part of that, and this is the bigger picture, is part of that is that in this budget, we cut funding to some of the PDD and they provide meals on wheels, they provide ambulatory, I wouldn't say ambulatory, but they definitely do rise to dialysis and things like that. So I'm thinking community-wide, some things that, do you want to interrupt me now?
Whenever, whenever I have a chance.
Okay. I didn't know if you had something to add to it. But I was just saying, you know, I've got to think as a whole as a community, there's some things that they do obviously in the care and that you don't. So when we start shifting funds, we've got to take that into consideration. And I guess my greatest fear, and this is just from case studies when I was in school, is typically what happens with these, this is not a money-making venture. I would say that if you charge 50 cents a ride, the decent fuel while you're sitting there absorbs that cost immediately. So would you, I mean, I guess you'd agree with that, but so we look as a board years down the road, obviously what they do, J-Trans an example, is as it quits making money, the city takes on more and more percentage of the service. And you look as a board, there's a lot of things we do as a board that aren't for our profit, they're for the service of the citizens. So that's one of those things. I just didn't know if you say long-term as Smart becomes more than a $50,000 across the city or?
Well, so from the standpoint of revenue, we are a non-revenue base. We charge zero fares. So all rides with us are at no cost for anyone, student, whomever they may be. Now, the, from the standpoint of meals on wheels, when you look at the funding at MDOT and you look at the various levels of mass transit dollars that they have, they have 5307, which is your urban areas, you have 5310, which is your senior area on agencies or aging or your meals on wheels type folks. So there are funding pools out there that go to all these different folks and all of them have their own need. You know, I'm not here to say that one is more important than the other. I think they all serve their need. But I guess I'm here in terms of saying that, you know, this is our eighth year here. I was, you know, I served as the chair of the committee that started it when we were here. We actually looked at exploring alternatives for generating capital at that point, or matching funds at that point. But I guess at the end of the day, I think that we have proven and I hope that we have proven and continue to prove that we provide a service to this community that is directly impactful on not just students, but equally impactful or even more so for those that truly have the need and the quality of life within this community, that to have this as their only, you know, opportunity for transportation, that there be a commitment from the city in supporting that in terms of the appreciation, in terms of the respect, or respect's probably not the name or the right word. But funding the service that directly provides services to each one of your constituents because we provide services, I guarantee, in every one of your wards and will continue to do so.
I was going to say, just your ability to grab 511 grants and Tiger Two grants, the things I've seen over the years is extraordinary. I'll tell you that personally and as a friend. And so I guess from a budgeting standpoint, you go, you know, you see case studies and things like that, but there's a reason that we're the only city in the state that is not a 50-50 match or 100% match. And I think that's from what y'all have done as a department. And so no, I just, I think there's some bigger pictures of things within this budget. We talked about the PDD and some issues like that. So I think that might have spurred you coming today, but there's not a doubt in my mind that y'all are good at what you do, getting the money and I appreciate what you've done.
Well, I appreciate that. And the PDD was actually written in the first pair transit plan. We have to adopt a pair transit plan, has to be submitted to the Mississippi Department of Transportation. And we had meetings with them and to my knowledge, I don't know if they are the recipient of state or federal funds at this point for transportation dollars. So, you know, I don't know that to be the case, but I'm pretty sure that, I know that they don't go through the regional planning process that we are required to from MDOT because we receive state funding.
Hold on, Mr. Turner?
And I wanted to just address briefly the GTPDD requests and how that's funded in this budget. Their Meals on Wheels request was funded fully. Their transportation request was reduced, but we did not reduce direct cost. We reduced indirect cost. So administrative services that are not directly related to the operation of the route. I believe that the money that we have included in this proposed budget is strictly direct costs.
Yes.
It is not inclusive of administrative costs, so treating similarly situated people similarly. And then I know from talking with some people at GTPDD and talking with Alderman Dumas that you have made an offer to them and I believe they had intentions of reaching out at some point to explore other funding mechanisms through the state or federal government themselves.
Well, they definitely were a part of our original planning process and we, as we, as any agency does in the state, and MDOT encourages this as part of the regional planning process, is that those that have similar functions within a region to coordinate their efforts so that there's no duplication or loss in funds or there's the efficiency there. So absolutely, we'd be glad to help.
Hold on, McCarver, did I see your hand again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did I see your hand?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Anyone else? Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. I have long been a supporter and a real fan of having Smart, the Smart system in town. I think we're incredibly fortunate to have it and it's incredibly fortunate to have you, so thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
All right. All right. The next thing we have is a presentation by Dr. Hyatt on the sales tax allocation and the distribution and approval of their annual budget for the 2% monies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to visit with you. I'm Regina Hyatt. I have the pleasure of serving as the Vice President for Student Affairs at Mississippi State and this is Maya Emerson, our student body president this year. And we want to first start by saying thank you for our ongoing, very positive partnership and relationship with the city of Starkville. As you all know, having a strong town and gown philosophy and relationship is critical to both of our successes. And this fall, we have welcomed again our largest class of students at Mississippi State. And so Starkville is thriving and Mississippi State is thriving and we think that these resources that we put toward the student experience are really important. So Maya is going to tell you a little bit about our request and I do have copies if you all need them.
I was going to let our IT expert pull that up and put that on the screen for us, please.
Very good.
Joel, if you don't mind?
Hello, there you are.
Yes, please. Thank you.
And the floor is Maya's.
Good evening. Thank you all for letting us be here tonight. We just want to say thank you. The Student Association wants to say thank you to you all for our great partnership, connecting community and campus. Our requests have not changed from any other year. This is the norm and that's what we've got. We're excited for it.
Actually, your request has changed. You've taken up Bulldog Bash from 145 to 170.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and you're looking at, hey, I'm paying attention.
You are paying attention.
Not new things.
Not new events, not new initiatives. So yes, I decided to move that extra 25,000 to Bulldog Bash with a new location. A bigger show comes more expenses. So I felt that this event that serves the community and campus would be a perfect place to put those funds.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
I know y'all moved it last year downtown. It seemed to be just a perfect place to have it as far as the number of folks it turned out. Were the students excited to have it downtown? Did they like it, I guess?
It was a transition, but students were excited once we got there. So I think this is the best place for it. We're excited about it, students are excited about it, so yes, sir.
I think we as a city are going to be much more prepared this year for the number of crowd that will be expected. I think on the police side as well. And I think everyone was kind of overwhelmed last year with the volume of people that turned out for it.
Yes, sir.
That's a good problem to have.
Good problem. Good problems. That we're prepared for this year.
Looking forward to it. So I think we've got it all worked out between the Main Street folks and partnership and the city with the special event. So thank you so much for all y'all have done to make that happen because we're excited. And it's not very far away. It's going to be an amazing weekend.
Three weeks?
Three weeks.
Exactly.
We'll be right.
Okay. Any other questions?
What is, did you say the enrollment count?
Well, we have, our official enrollment will be official tomorrow, which is our 10th class day, but we're expecting over 22,000 students this fall.
And that's the most we ever had, right? That's, we've never, we've never, we've never cracked the 22 figure. That's amazing.
Very exciting.
Is it the largest freshman class as well?
I think so, yes. Again, I think we just feel very fortunate to have the opportunity to use these resources to support student life. And as you all know how important that is, we want students to come to Starkville and to come to Mississippi State and leave here with their degrees from Mississippi State. And a big part of that is making sure that they have a positive experience here. And our Student Association works really hard to make sure that there are things for them to do and lots of fun and supportive activities that keep them on campus and in our community. So that's what these resources go toward. And thankfully, those resources continue to increase as we get more students and more folks in Starkville.
And we want them to consider making Starkville home in the long run. So that's wonderful. All right, any other questions?
Mayor, just very briefly, I see that there's about a projected revenue of $425,000 going to that MSU. And just a point I wanted to make is to give recognition to the appreciation that the city of Starkville has for the student population that is that the city of Starkville went back and amended the distribution formula to give Mississippi State 20%. So that speaks volumes as to where our city stands in terms of its gratitude, humbleness, appreciation for the students. So that's almost a half million dollars. So that, nothing else need to be said from the voice of the city of Starkville.
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for pointing that. And it continues their projecting 450 for next year and hopefully all of that will be true. And you can continue to ramp up that music maker part of that. We'll get some amazing bands. That's just great. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all very much. And I would say the best way to keep that number to go up is get those students to occasionally get off campus to company. That's what makes that money.
Trust me, if y'all have been to any of our new restaurants, you know the students are there and are enjoying some great food in Starkville.
We do. We certainly appreciate it. So thank you very much for coming this evening. And I understand a motion to approve their 2% budget. I have a motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank y'all. Hail state!
We will see y'all soon. All right. And now we have a public hearing, our first public hearing to amend the Starkville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 82, Article 3, Assemblies, Parades, and Processions, consistent with the city's special event policies. Before I open it for a public hearing, do we have any discussion from the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll open it as a public hearing. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak to this matter? You have an opportunity to come forward. You may speak pro or con. And if there's a whole field of folks, I'll time it, but as it stands right now, I'll let it go for the time being. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against the special event? Anyone wishing to speak against? All right. Ms. Isaac, you're going to come forward? Okay.
I'm forward.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just coming forward to say some of the things, and it is, you know, positive and some are not. But all we can do is go on with it. We're going to say our little policies too. I'm still going to say that. And I just don't know what we can do. We have already passed, it has already been passed. And I know it was done by, you know, Google and you, but I would just like to say, when we think about what we're doing here in Starkville, students, we enjoy them, yeah, we enjoy their money, right, we are. But we are talking about the safety. I'm quite sure some of the parents know some of the stuff that was going on, you know, and parades and, you know, all that kind of stuff that's going on within. And as you know, we had that parade and everybody engaged, or however you see it, they were included. And I don't like to disinclude people, but there's certain things that we couldn't put in there. But it's passed. I just want to say, I object.
All right, thank you, Ms. Isaac. Anyone else wishing to speak against? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. We will have our second public hearing at the next board meeting, at which point time it will be available for passage. Item B is the second public hearing on the adoption of the 2018-2019 budget for the city of Starkville and establishing the millage rate for fiscal year 2018-2019. Any discussion of the board before we open it as a public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will open it as a public hearing. This is about adopting the millage rate and the budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. Do we have anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, do we have anyone wishing to speak against the budget? Anyone wishing to speak against? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. That concludes our second public hearing, which is required by law. Do we have any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the board? All right, seeing none. We will move to the next item, which is discussion, consideration, and purchase of an ad for the semi-annual full-color publication titled Progress to be received with a commercial dispatch and Starkville Dispatch. That's a Progress edition that is a fairly popular publication that is available throughout the year. I think they do it in the spring. So they have asked to put that on our agenda to see if we're interested in publishing our, what's the expression? I'm sorry, the 1731 has certain expressions that go with it, but the advantages of being in the city of Starkville.
That's a good paraphrase. To bring into favorable notice the opportunities of the city.
Into favorable notice, so.
Move approval.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I just, that was my question is, city attorney is, if we were to accept this ad, do you feel like we're all good under the statute and the code?
Correct.
And Mayor, is it your proposal that we look to take a quarter-page ad?
It's actually looking at the sixth-page ad. Sixth of a page?
Sixth of a page ad.
If we were going to do it, so.
And the final dollar figure on that is approximately?
Joel? Oh, thank you. Very good, thank you. I'm going to just keep you up here so that you can scroll through, please, sir. The spring and fall is $440.
Mayor, move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, under board business, we have a consideration of adoption of a resolution setting the millage rate for the city of Starkville fiscal year 2019 at 26.63 mils. Alderman Systrom?
I'm going to move approval. And I would like to remind everybody that what we adopt tonight is a summary budget. We've had a work session, we've had public hearings on the budget. And I know some of us have had conversations with constituents throughout the city about the budget. One thing that we talked about at the work session that we have not gotten included in the E-Packet, and that's why you have a revised resolution at the table, is we talked about the idea of establishing a debt service fund so that the monies that are used for bond and interest payments are identified separately and budgeted separately. And also setting a threshold to fund the library each year. So the resolution at the table has those amounts included and it totals still to the same 26.63 mils, but it breaks those amounts out separately. And I'm going to move approval of this as amended at the table. Can you pass that down, please?
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Systrom. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Walker. Discussion. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to say, first I'd say I appreciate the Alderman from Two's work as budget chair and the time, effort, energy she's put into preparing the budget. I feel like it's a good, solid budget. As I've learned in my five-plus years here, there's never enough money to do the things we'd all like to do. And the things I feel like need to be done, we've ridden around town and the potholes, we're trying to address that, albeit we're having to borrow money to do that. Ideally, it'd be nice if we had money sitting in the bank in the budget every year that we could make some significant repairs to our roads and potholes and drainage projects and other capital improvements. We've got the 1.05 millage rate increase is, I don't think is unduly burdensome, albeit I got my tax bill, though the date was almost $5,300, almost $450 a month. And that's just for my home. And I know there are a lot of people, including the mayor, that own a lot of other things in the city. And the city portion of that bill is about 78 bucks a month. 78 bucks, about 17 and a half, 78%. The rest of that goes to our schools and to the county. We've got a fire station that has not been manned, that was built probably 10 years ago. We've got, we're short on police staff. I'm not sure how many officers, 12, 14 maybe, I'm not sure. Captain Outlaw. We've got a lot of needs. And I've had one constituent call me and questioned the budget and I challenged him to come down and find a place we could fund all those things that we need for the city right now. As Alderman and Miller said a few months ago, there are three ways to generate revenue, and that's borrow, tax, or annex. And I think this is going to be a small amount to ask to get us in a situation or position to better our parks. If we were not doing that, or if we weren't having it dedicated or designated to a particular fund such as that, I would not be voting in support of it tonight. But since that is going to bring our parks, I feel like take a substantial leap toward getting them in a better state of repair. As I mentioned at their last meeting, when the public input during those informational sessions for the comprehensive master plan was being developed, that was one of the biggest things that was brought up. Maintenance over and over, upkeep. And I think if we're going to take on some sort of major parks investment, turn them into quality park or something that we've got to bring our parks up to speed, and this is going to be a step in that direction. We've got some good things going on in the parks. I hope we're able to do it. If we're not able to take this initial step tonight, and some board members in particular carry this on their backs for the rest of the board, we're not going to be able to move forward with that project. And we might as well just quit talking about it and talk about other things. But we're not going to be able to be the Starkville that I think we can be if we don't all work together as a board going forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Anything further? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
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 All right, my vote of four to three, motion carries. I'm sorry. Listen, here's the... All right, next item is consideration of approval of the summary budget for the city of Starkville, including Starkville utilities for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018 and ending September 30, 2019.
Move approval.
A motion for approval from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Systrom. Discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
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 By a vote of four to three, motion carries. All right, next we have the discussion and consideration of appointment to the Housing Authority Board to fill a position currently occupied by Mr. James Henley Jr., whose term will expire on September 5, 2018. The new term would begin September 6 and end September 6, 2023. On board approval, and we have, excuse me, Mr. Henley, actually, I was going to go in alphabetical order. So Ms. Evans would be first. If you don't mind, I apologize, I should have said something earlier. But we have two applicants for this particular position. Ms. Regina Evans has applied for it and Mr. Henley is asking to be reappointed. So we need to ask them to come here tonight so that they can present themselves to the board and the board could ask questions if so desired, so.
My name is Regina Evans. I'd like to say good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor. I'm sorry.
Will Mr. Henley go outside, please?
Alderman Ball. Oh, yes, Mr. Henley, I'm sorry. Thank you, Alderman Ball. Mr. Henley, I'm sorry. It is customary for us to ask the other applicant to go outside. So if you would, we will come get you when Ms. Evans has completed her discussion with us. Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, Alderman Ball.
I just want to tell you all a little bit about myself. I have been here ever since 1973. I worked with the Service Clerk Office upon the Ms. Cook, Byron Cook, and Angie McGinnis. I was a chief deputy in the criminal division with Ms. McGinnis. And then I worked at Mississippi Department of Correction. That's where I retired in 2015. I worked for Ken Valentine. I was his secretary for Region 3. And we reached from West Point to the Coats. I have a lot of leisure time and I've always worked in government. And I would love to serve on this board. I love people, I love working with people, and I think I would be a great asset. And I would appreciate you all considering me for one of you of the board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Evans. We appreciate it when people are interested in serving on our boards and commissions. Do we have any questions of any of the board members? Alderman?
Yes, Ms. Evans, why do you want to be on the board? What's your objective?
Well, first of all, I'm a people person. I love people, I love to know, I want to know about, I'm looking at that board when I'm talking about those new apartments. I'm really, really interested in that because I want to know what the people have to say about moving a new location. I'm not against it, I'm not for it, I really don't know a lot about it. And I feel like with my knowledge, I'd be a good person to serve on that board.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Any other questions? Alderman Walker?
Ms. Evans, first of all, I just want to say thank you for considering serving and thank you for all your service that you've had in the past. And I appreciate your looking to continue to be, to make yourself in service of others. So thank you for that. The question I had is the people person, and maybe you alluded to this just a little bit, but why in particular the Housing Authority? What from your background would help you help that board make good decisions in relationship to the Housing Authority?
Yeah, just because people that live in the Housing Authority have a budget for is their income. We all do. And when you come to people that live in those type areas, you really, really be considerate about how they feel and where they want to live. And I look and I listen and I drive around. I work for, I also help Southern Foundation. We feed the children during the summer months. And a lot of those kids don't have any food because of their income. You don't really know what a person's story is until you listen to it. And that's why I believe in listening to what people have to say. And by listening, you learn.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Ms. Evans, have you been involved in the Housing Authority before?
Never.
Never? All right, anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And if you would, we'll just ask you to swap with Mr. Henley.
Sure, I do that.
All right, thank you so much. You're up, Mr. Henley. I'm sorry, didn't mean to send you out of the room, but...
Well, I have been a part of a municipality for 50 years or so. This is the first mayor and board of all meeting I have ever attended. Let me say, I'm impressed with how you conduct business. I'm James Henley. I graduated from Mississippi State University in 1960, School of Engineering. Didn't graduate with honors, but I was close. Left here, I went to University of New Mexico, got a master's degree. Left here, I went to University of New Mexico, got a master's degree in engineering in 1962. I worked for Sandia Corporation in Albuquerque in the field of nuclear weapons about three years. I went to NASA in Huntsville, worked three years for NASA on the Saturn V vehicle. Left there and went to work as a manager of manufacturing of pipe flanges. Left there and went to Mississippi Chemical Corporation in Yezu City, where I worked twenty years in the design and development and construction of facilities that make commercial fertilizers. I went to Oregon and Jackson, where I worked in Jackson and Vicksburg and several places across the southeast in refinery modifications and construction and construction management. The recession of 2008 put me out of business. I worked on a contract basis, so when the work plays out, you go home, so I did. But I was ready to retire anyway, and I moved to Starkville in 2009, and that's where I live now. I was appointed to the commission, to the board as a commissioner of the Housing Authority five years ago. My term expires tomorrow, and I'm seeking for another appointment. It's my objective as a commissioner to look after the city of Starkville interest and the taxpayer interest. I served in Yezu City for ten years as chairman of the commissioners of the Housing Authority, so I come with that background. So what questions do you have with me?
Okay, anyone questions of Mr. Henley? Alderman, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Vaughn.
And you're serving the first five years, what would you say, or why do you want the reappointment? Why are you here today?
The commission, the Housing Authority needs me because of my engineering background. We're talking about relocating Conacres, and I think it needs my background to assist in that understanding of what to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Henley, what brought you back to Starkville?
Took me forty-nine years to get back.
And I'm asking what brought you back. I'm always trying to find out what it is that draws people back, so that we can keep doing it.
It would be a little complicated. My wife at the time.
Well, I didn't mean to get personal.
Worked thirty years as a minister of music at First Baptist Church in Starkville, in Yezu City. And she says, when I quit, I want to leave, so we decided to leave. Where are we going to go? Well, we're going to go where her brother and sister lived, so that's why we came here.
That's just fine. Family brought you back.
Any questions? Sorry, what?
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Any other questions? What did you find rewarding about the Housing Authority's service for five years?
Well, I missed one meeting in five years. I missed one meeting in five years because I was out of the country. So I tend to business, I do my homework. Amy Bishop confirmed that, I think. I'm not always popular. I bring up things that other people do not bring up. And as I said, my interest is in looking after the city of Starkville and the taxpayer.
Okay? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Walker?
Mr. Henley, thank you for your service, and I appreciate you seeking reappointment tonight. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing the Starkville Housing Authority? And how are you see yourself as looking out for the city of Starkville and the taxpayers, assuming whether the Conacres move happens or doesn't happen? What do you think is the biggest challenge in facing the Starkville Housing Authority moving forward?
Challenge to the Housing Authority? Well, we have a budget subsidized by the federal government, like forty thousand dollars a month. I don't like to see money not used wisely. As a taxpayer, I want to support a firm process where you look after the expenditures, and just because it's federal money doesn't mean that it's free. Somebody's got to pay the bills. So I'm very, very conservative. I look at the government's money and the Housing Authority money like it's mine. And I'm not always popular, I only vote one of five, but that's my feeling.
Thanks, sir.
Does that answer your question?
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Henley. We appreciate your service and appreciate you coming to apply for another term.
I didn't come here five years ago. I wasn't asked to come, but I served anyway. But I'm glad to come to a mayor and board of Alderman meeting. Bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Alderman? Oh, okay, sure. Thank you. Did I see a hand? I'm sorry. All right, we've had two very good candidates, and the board has handled it in several ways before. One, we've taken it under advisement, and then come back at the next board meeting and made an appointment. Or we have done it at the table, at the time of the interviews. So whatever the board's pleasure, I see Alderman Sistrum, did you?
And I am one of those people who likes to sleep on things, and I would prefer that we take this under advisement and move that we do take this under advisement and make our appointment at the next meeting.
Okay, I have a motion to table this to the next meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Walker, and that is to bring it back at the meeting of September the eighteenth. Any further discussion? No, sir. No, sir. You are welcome to stay, you and Ms. Evans both, so we will see how the vote comes out. How about that? Thank you. I have a motion and a second. I see no further discussion. All those in favor of holding this appointment until the eighteenth of September, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, let's do a roll count. If you would, I'm sorry, if you would answer your name as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Nay.
Alderman Sistrum.
Aye.
Alderman Little.
Nay.
Alderman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Aye.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four to three, the motion fails. All right, do I have a motion? Alderman Carver.
Well, first of all, obviously, I made a motion earlier, and Mr. Taylor, I think, was a hundred percent correct. It was probably the wrong way to do that, and I apologize for that. But the reason was is just when you have a reappointment, oftentimes you've got an individual that you're comfortable with, that you know their qualifications, and you are very qualified as well. So it wasn't anything, obviously, it wasn't anything personal, but that wasn't the correct way to handle that, so I apologize. I do think that your engineering background plays into this, my vote personally. I think the fact of current developments that are still in the works plays into my vote. So unless Alderman Little had something, I was going to make a motion, the same motion I said earlier in the meeting, with the reappointment of Mr. Henley effective September the sixth.
Okay, so you moved to reappoint Mr. Henley effective September six?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Mayor, I'd like to say this. I would like to say thank you to both applicants. Thank you, Ms. Evans, for your willingness to put yourself out there and volunteer for a position. It's not often the times that I've sat up here and had more than one applicant for a position. It's a good problem. I wish we had this problem more often. I think you're a great candidate, and I hope to see you back up here for another opportunity as it presents itself. Personally, I feel too that Mr. Henley's fifteen years prior service on the housing board, two with another city, and five, or two terms with another city, and one term with our city, brings a lot to the table and keeps some continuity on some pretty big things that are going on over there right now that may or may not go forward. I don't know what's going to transpire with the Conacres situation going forward, but I think with some continuity, that would be good, and he does bring a lot to the table, so that's why I'm supporting him tonight.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion from the board? Alderman Walker?
I just want to echo a little bit what Alderman Little said and just thank both of you. I'm honestly not sure how I'm about to vote, and I appreciate both of you coming out and your willingness to serve. And I'm hopeful that whoever doesn't get elected to serve on the Housing Authority will look and find other opportunities for other boards and other commissions and other ways to continue to serve, because we have lots of opportunity. Like Alderman Little said, there is some decisions on here that we make during the course that are easier to make than others, and this is a tough one. When you have two citizens that want to give up their time and volunteer their time to listen to what people have to say, provide expertise that may be appropriate, that makes a really tough choice, and I'm really not sure how I'm about to vote right here, because I think that either way I vote the Starkville, the Housing Authority wins, and so I think at the end of the day, that's what's important. So again, thank you all both for being willing to provide a service to our community.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. All right, any further?
You know, I can't get off the hook because I'm the liaison for the Housing Authority. If I don't say something, I'm going to get beat anyway. But Mr. Henley, Ms. Evans, thank both of you so much for applying for this position. There's a lot going on over there. Like Alderman from three says, there's a lot going on over there. And so we really need somebody that really been into it. I don't work with Mr. Henley before by me being the liaison. I know what he goes at, I know what he looks for, and like he says, sometimes he don't want somebody that's standing. It'd be four gets the one, and he'd be the one, and so he end up like I am a lot of times, you know. You just have to follow your heart, and I just thank you so much for following your heart. Again, thank you both of you for applying for this position. Like they say, I wish both of you, we had someone to put both of you, but it's going to be a hard vote to cast right now.
I would like to say that we are taking applications for election commissioners through Friday, correct?
That's correct. Election commissioners are.
We need five election commissioners, and that is, as we've seen recently, is a very important job.
No doubt. Anyone, anything further? All right, we have a motion and a second. We will do a roll call vote on this one as well. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Aye.
Alderman Sistrum.
Nay.
Alderman Little.
Aye.
Alderman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Aye.
All right, by a vote of five to two, I can't count, by a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Henley, and thank you again, Ms. Evans. We appreciate you coming out to put yourself forward. And truly, the election commission is another opportunity. All right, moving along. Under planning, we have considerations of variance eighteen dash zero seven, request by Jay Fowler, Real Estate LLC, for a variance from the required lot area per unit for proposed multifamily building at 701 and 707 North Montgomery Street. Property numbers 1181-00-002.03 and 1181-00-002.00. And Ms. Hammond, Ms. Corman are going to make that presentation.
This is a request for variance from the lot area requirements for proposed multifamily building at 701 and 707 North Montgomery. And as you can see on the aerial here on the left, that is Suddeth School directly to the west, and these properties are actually involved in a rezoning last month with August sixth. And that rezoning was based on air in the map, and they were rezoned to R5 Alderman. And the developer currently owns all four lots. The two on the interior have one fourplex in each one. And the northernmost and the southernmost have a fourplex, but they have additional space for more units on the side. The developer is proposing to add an eightplex to each one of those lots, and the ordinance allows for only one unit for every eighteen hundred square feet. The two proposed eightplex units for 701 would bring it to fifteen hundred and forty-four, and for 707 to fifteen eighty-nine square feet per unit. They attended the Board of Adjustments Appeals on August twenty-second, and the board voted seven oh to recommend approval on this request.
And is the applicant here? Is that Mr. Pepper? Are you representing the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And right here is, you can see their preliminary site plan. This is a better image. Sorry, I don't have a mouse. The image to the top is the northernmost, and the image on the bottom right is the southernmost. The brown area is the eightplex they're proposing to add, and then the square with the hatch that's next to it is the existing fourplex. The grayed out area is the property that'd be required for that addition.
All right, any questions of Mr. Hammond or Ms. Corman?
Yeah.
Alderman Walker?
So how I'm reading this is that the existing fourplex that's there, that's counting against the eighteen hundred square feet for the entirety of the lot?
Correct. Once you add it, the total of the, it would be twelve units. It would go under that eighteen hundred square feet per unit.
And so what would, if, as drawn, take away the units, what would that lot support?
Without the variance.
Without the variance.
I think they just, they lost one unit, and they're also doing, I think the existing, which Mr. Pepper could speak to us, I think the fourplex are two veteran units, these are one veteran units. So as far as number of bedrooms, I don't think it's really increased, but to get to eighteen hundred without, let me just kind of guess at the math.
Are you talking about probably six instead of eight, an additional six instead of eight? So how far are they, how far are they under the, what's the total acreage or the square footage that we had?
Mr. Pepper, you want to come up here, please, sir?
And so while y'all are looking at that, so there is no, do we need all the setback requirements?
Yeah, they've gone through a DRC, and they've actually addressed the comments at the DRC and submitted another site plan.
So setback, we need the setback requirements?
Setbacks are all being met. Dunster locations, which is the last thing we're talking about, just can't see my cursor, is in the, there's two proposed locations. One is off of the private driver side, and the other location would be on Jamesville Street at the bottom left of the proposed building. And I believe that the location would be chosen off the private drive.
We are waiting on okay from the school district to get that.
And that would be enclosed and meeting all of our?
Yes, we're only going to build one of them. We just had to get permission from the school district to build on their private drive.
They're exploring two locations. Staff prefers one on the private drive as opposed to the public street. And then also, for various reasons, one would be less visible, and then the grade change access would be less.
So y'all are still waiting, I'm sorry, I stepped on you. I was going to say, are you still waiting on the school then?
Correct. We're waiting to get permission since they own that property in that driveway.
Is that imminent? Are they taking it up now?
Yeah, I think they've already met with Edward, I believe.
Mr. Kemp, do you join us?
We have not gotten a response, but I think they've met.
Mr. Kemp, have you heard from the school district?
I haven't had them, good evening, about a week, week and a half ago, and they actually have a lot of the same desires as far as putting it on the backside of the property, so it's not right in the main entrance on Greenfield Drive as you're coming into the school. They just want some, I think they were going to get with you, that's just some additional information about, they weren't sure about landscape buffering and screening and that type of thing. They just had some general questions about that, but I think that in concept, that they would prefer it off of the private drive as well, because as I understand it also, the garbage truck also services the Suddeth from the back and could come out this drive anyway in the route, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, just to reiterate, so all the setback, we are meeting all the setback requirements with the proposal, so the only thing that we're not meeting is the overall lot dimension of square footage per unit?
Correct. We're doing large one-bedroom units, so we're not increasing the population. Even dropping back to a two-bedroom, six units would increase, be more people. They just wanted, they wanted to do the one bedroom, not reduce, not increase the population of the area as much, but get the extra two units while doing that. Thank you.
Anything further? Anyone else from the board? Any other discussion? Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Pepper?
I don't think so, unless there's some other questions.
Okay, all right.
Was there any feedback from any neighboring residents?
I took contact from one neighbor who said he lived on the east side, I think in the neighborhood. I don't think he lived right on the gum group the way he was talking. He was just asking questions. He wasn't for work.
That was it?
That was it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We need a motion.
Mayor move approval.
Motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. All right, we move to the claim stocket.
I know you had to change it. Did Lisa, did someone, did I dream that, Lisa? Did you say you had to change the claim document, or was that something else?
That was last time.
Seeing your moment.
It's okay, you can join me. All right, I have a motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Systrom. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. All right, the next item, Chief, we have a fire engine replacement plan presentation from Chief Yarborough, who has just come back from a cruise. He's looking rested.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Chief.
I only have four slides for you tonight. We talked about this replacement plan on last board meeting. I went back and I got Zach Price and what a new ladder truck would be. This trucks include all of the equipment on the truck, and includes, I think, a three-year warranty, so.
A three-year warranty?
Three-year warranty.
And on all parts and moving parts?
Some of the motor, and the most important.
Transmission.
Motors and...
Why? Is this the hundred foot?
This is a hundred foot platform, this.
And we can't do with a lesser size? That's a leading question, but, you know, and that's because of?
Because of, just really a hundred foot is not big enough if you, dealing with Mississippi State, just the size of the building. Because you gotta think about, when you go out there, we're not gonna actually get a hundred foot up in the air because you have to park out. So you're only get, it's gonna take maybe twenty-five foot away, so you may probably get seventy-five to eighty feet, just depending on the distance you park away from the building. Because we never gonna go straight up because we can't get right next to the building because of collapse, so.
Okay, all right. And I asked you to research this, and I think you ended up with an answer. And I don't recall if I asked for a percentage or asked for an actual number of the service calls that need a ladder of this nature in the city versus the university. You had, I think you said that we do need a ladder of this nature in the city. Am I correct about that?
Yes, ma'am. We need it in the city as well. We use it just as much in the city we do in the, on campus. Matter of fact, pretty much for every structure fire we have, whether it's a two-story building or just a regular house, we use this on that. We will use it on that as well for rescue purposes. In just a apartment complex, we had that, can't think of the name of that.
Avalon or?
Avalon, yes, ma'am. It was critical in there. We never, well, we got it out, but it took a long, long way to get it out, just for that, so.
Okay. And how long does it take to get these, well, I'm sorry, first payment due, but when's the, when would it be delivered?
Three hundred and thirty-five, three hundred and thirty days from whatever we decide.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You still got a year. It's about a year, take about a year to build it.
Okay, all right.
Looked at other options to maybe purchase, if they had one that was available to purchase, but only thing about doing that, if you purchase one like that, you're not gonna get, we have certain stipulations we need on a ladder truck, you're not gonna get that if you try to buy a different one, so.
This is custom as opposed to off the shelf?
Yes, ma'am.
And I hesitate to even use that language with a fire truck. Okay, all right. Alderman Systrom, I see your hand.
I wanted to be sure about the first payment date. When we've had these discussions before, I thought that we ordered it. It took about a year to get here, and then the financing would be in place, and the first payment would be closer to September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Am I off of you?
That's better.
No, I'm sorry?
That's the one, right. That's option one and option two. So it's option two is the one.
They all say twenty nineteen.
They all say twenty nineteen.
It's twenty nineteen. The first payment would have to be, it was the same as the last one, sixty thousand dollars.
Smaller amount.
Smaller amount. It's pretty much had to pay.
Okay. It's like putting it down if you didn't order it.
So it's in the next...
There's gonna be another option.
Right, twenty nineteen, still would be your payment due.
Be sixty instead of a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and fifty, or I don't know how many years.
And we've just adopted a budget that we didn't include that in. That's why I'm asking.
Fortunately, it's not till nine fifteen, so.
Well, that's why, the very tail end of the next budget year.
Well, if we did something for the next meeting, we're probably talking about October first.
That tips us into a new budget year. But this, the truck that we have currently, would we be able to sell it prior to this first payment date being?
That would be up to the board, but I mean, I reached out already to Brindley Mountain, which they, that's what they do sell for trucks. He thanked me, he had some interest in the truck, being sold. He said anywhere from two hundred thousand above, just a matter of, that'd be the board's pleasure, then I can talk with him further about that.
Okay. And in this year's time, it's still going to be, we're still going to find it usable in some fashion or another?
It can be used, but Alderman Carver asked earlier about driving it. We just don't drive just in case it break down. My fear is it break down, breaking down, head into a structural fire in the middle of the highway, and it's gonna be chaos because it's gonna break down, and...
So if we, okay, well, let me ask this then, just from an operational standpoint, if we're not gonna use it because we don't want it to break down, why wouldn't we go ahead and sell it and get rid of it if we're not gonna be used?
We can move ladder two to station one and use it if we need to.
Okay, well, I'm getting into the operational aspects. It was more of a curiosity question because if it's just gonna hang around and take up space and we're not gonna use it for fear of it not working, then...
What kind of impact, I guess, on your department is, would it be to do without? I guess you're kind of doing it now, so.
We're pretty much doing it now. If we need to use it, we could, but just, we kind of just in case.
That may be the route to go before it depreciates another year, another year older, and it's not in the best of shape anyway, and that may be the route to consider.
There is potential of firing buyers out there.
Mayor, I recognize.
Don't pay any attention to that.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Chief, just to follow up on the question from the gentleman from four three, he said, what impact would it be on your department without the ladder truck that is housed at station one? And answering his question to the mayor's question, you said that you're operating without it now. So if that is the case, then there's no rational basis to keep it. Wouldn't you agree?
Yes, sir, and I think it's more...
Yes or no? I mean, just...
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, go ahead, which explanation? Go ahead.
I guess it's more of a having it just in case if ladder two breaks down. I understand...
Okay, let's catch, I mean, don't go around the world and talk to me. I mean, if it's not usable, and it may break down on the road, you're telling the mayor and the board, I'm just trying to get to the bottom line, I'm not trying to give you a hard time. But if it, you know, if it's not usable, then it serves no purpose to you.
Right.
And, right, you represent to the mayor that it just, you're therefore to sit there because it could be a liability or operational problem.
Yes, sir.
So if that is the case, as the gentleman from three is saying, do you agree or do you disagree that the board should proceed with selling the truck at this time?
I think we should proceed with selling.
Now, if we, if the board decides to proceed with the selling at this time, how would you function from an operational point of view without that ladder truck if there's a major fire, for example, at Mississippi State?
We would use ladder two, which is at station two.
And you would be able to fulfill your firefighting functions in your ordinary course of business with that, with the vehicle that's station number two?
We could use it, yes, sir. The only difference is, we got about a thirty-foot difference on the method of ladder, but that would be the only difference.
But at the same time, as fire chief, you still feel that if the board were to authorize to accept, be it, or whatever method it desired to sell the truck, you would be able to fulfill through the Starkville Department its firefighting operation without any impairment or any obstruction in carrying out its duties?
Yes, sir.
So, and you said someone's offered to, at least a couple hundred thousand dollars just on official conversation?
Yes, sir. He's stayed about that much.
Because, you know, as I said last meeting, you know, we got that truck during the two thousand five nine term. You specifically said two thousand six, which was in the same time period. We paid at least about seven hundred fifty, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're gonna get two hundred thousand dollars after twelve years' usage. We may get more than that. So you think that's, if the board proceed in that direction, that's a good bit of money to get out of a truck that, in your opinion, is not working?
Yes, sir.
So, I just want to develop that so I can make sure that the board understands where we are with the truck. So, that's all I was asking, Chief. So let me just sum this up by saying, so, it appears from what you're saying, you tell me if I'm wrong, Chief, it appears what I'm saying, what you're saying is that board, you know, I have no objection if you, if at some point, whenever the board, mayor board decides to go ahead and advertise for the truck to be sold, and if you do that, mayor board, then it's not gonna interfere with our firefighting duties and responsibilities. And we're able to fulfill our duties with the engine that's already at station number two. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Aye, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And would you move the ladder to station one?
We would, because it's a centralized location, moving that to station one.
All right, thank you. Vice, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alderman Walker.
Chief, I think the Vice Mayor and Alderman Little bring up good points, and how, what I thought I heard you say upfront is that while you don't believe ladder one is a very reliable truck at the moment, essentially it's redundancy in the system. So what happens, what kind of maintenance or issues have we had with ladder two?
We have a few issues, but nothing like ladder one. It's running good, it's been fine.
So I just, I just want you to give us the recommendation that you feel comfortable with, because if we, if we able to put this project, or this truck out for bid, or sell it in two months, and we're still ten months away from getting the other truck, and ladder two goes down for any length of time, at that point, are you still going to be able to handle any fire or anything that was gonna, that might happen inside the city limits or on campus, to a way that you feel like the city of Starkville would be providing its best service?
Well, looking at it that way, thinking of it from that way, my recommendation now, I think would be changed, it would be to keep ladder one until we get the other truck, just in case. And I understand that we could always use, we could drive it if we needed to, but if ladder two did go down, then we're gonna be stuck.
And that, and again, I'm, you know, I want, I want us and I want you to make the decision that you feel is, you know, what, how many, how many months out is a level of risk that we're willing to take? Is it with four months to go, or two months to go to sell it, or is it now? And I'll be honest, Chief, I'm gonna be relying on making this decision on whatever that you believe is your recommendation.
Okay, I saw Alderman Little and then Alderman Systrom.
I agree with Alderman Walker on that. We're gonna defer to you as to when we think we should get rid of it. But I do think the mayor, maybe you could task the chief with going ahead and securing quotes and some hard and fast quotes and lease agreements, so the justice attorney can review those and maybe act on this sooner rather than later, because it sounds like it's something we need to act on. And maybe we can work it out where it'll be after October first, twenty nineteen, when your money's due.
Okay. Alderman Systrom?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You wanted to respond to Alderman Little?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Speaking with leasing one, with Allen Gold, whoever decided to get the truck with, I don't think it'd be a problem if we decided this board being the next board being to go ahead and purchase it to move the payment to October first. That's just a number he put in right there. So if we decided to do it, the only difference, if we order anytime after the twelfth of September, the cost is gonna go up about four point five percent cost of tariff. So anywhere from four point five to six percent, anything after the twelfth. So we're talking about additional sixty thousand dollars on the truck.
And we're gonna lose basically on selling.
Well, we could probably change that date for the payment. Alderman Systrom?
And that, and that was my question initially, was to delay the order. But I think what I'm now hearing is, we could go ahead and get it ordered and delay the first payment so that it's the next budget year.
But we don't meet again till the eighteenth?
Well, we could, what's, I'm sorry, what was the?
We don't meet again till the eighteenth.
Well, we could do it now and just, and make that payment, make your, make your motion contingent on that payment being October one, twenty nineteen. Right.
Yeah, Chief, as the gentleman from four followed back up after my question, that's why I ask you Atlanta questions, and, you know, I asked you those questions, you said you thought we could, then when the gentleman from four, then, you know, you waffled on the issue. So you demonstrate uncertainty. So, I mean, I, along with the other colleagues who asked questions, we want to defer to your attention, but now I'm convinced that you're not for sure. So I'm not, I'm not going to vote to advertise, because you're the chief, I mean, that's your field expertise. So you, when the gentleman from four asked you that question, well, and you changed your mind. So now, I'm not convinced we need to do it. So I'm gonna follow your recommendation as the other members was asking. So at first when I asked you the question, you seemed a little bit sure, but, but I'm not in favor of advertising because you, you have some reluctance about wanting to sell it. And you're the chief, I mean, that's why I asked you all those questions. And I was trying to make the record real clear, but now when you responded to the gentleman from four question, I'm glad he asked that question because you came back and demonstrated some uncertainty. So since you demonstrated uncertainty about whether you need to advertise, or the board need to give authority to advertise or not, I think we need to keep it until you deem otherwise, if in fact that is your recommendation. But I think, you know, we just need to keep it, given what you said, until you demonstrate and convince this board that we need to do that. Mayor, aye, oh, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I apologize to you, Chief, I put you on the spot, and I didn't really intend to do that, I was just kind of curious. Yes, you may, go ahead.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yeah, I don't think I said, Mayor, we were not trying, I thought you called my name.
No, I apologize. He wanted to say something to you, I wanted to make sure he had your attention, that's all.
Initially, thinking about getting rid of the truck, and I think that's a good idea. I think we just probably need to move it to, if the board decides to purchase the new apparatus, later on, probably six months down the road, look at going and selling it then. Maybe by the time we get at the end of six months, it'll be ready to be sold, and we can get rid of it then. Just to be on the safe side, to keep it in case something did happen, so.
Yes, sir.
The uncertainty, that's what I meant with that.
Yes, sir. And Chief, just realized, nervous in my role to put anybody on the spot. I just want to make sure as, that I get all the information out. But what these questions do, allow the board be able to make decisions, make informed decisions. And sometimes there may be a lack of patience here at the table, but we have to make sure we do these things. And that's just my profession, ask questions, you know, make sure, make sure we get all the information out. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, the chief has presented to us options. Do we have a motion for him to move Alderman Systrom?
I move that we purchase, whoop, there went my options there. I move that we...
Did you do it wrong?
I'm sorry.
He's got a dark font on the dark.
I move approval of the purchase of a new ladder truck with a twelve-year financing option contingent upon them being able to move the first payment date to October one, twenty nineteen.
Okay. Everyone understand the motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Little. Just further discussion? Okay, so twelve years, moving it to October one, twenty nineteen for the first payment. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Chief, as you're, as you're walking off, is there, are we still going to, while we're in this process, we've committed to it, are we still gonna be able to look at potential fire rebates for other state contractors potentially assisting with payments for the truck?
Yes, sir. And also, what we do, always, every year, I come to the board, ask to apply for AFG grant, also be applying for that grant if the board will, which should be coming up in two months. And that grant could be used to purchase this apparatus. If we get the grant, we don't have to worry about paying anything but the...
Let's go get that grant. We're gonna approve, we're gonna approve and write that grant, Chief. I appreciate it.
So one's going to two, two going to one? Ladder one's going to two, and two's going to one?
No.
You're not gonna move it?
Right now, we probably won't, just keep it what it is. But if we decide, the board decides to get rid of ladder one, then we'll make that move at that point.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. All right. All right, we're getting into the home stretch, folks. We have one more item on the agenda, which is consideration of requests for the extended event hours.
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
A second?
I have a second from Alderman Systrom. And that will be... And that will be moving the hours to eleven fifty-nine, so that the witching hour doesn't hit us. Okay, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Alderman.
I believe this was said at the work session. I just want to make sure that I heard correctly. That this is the, Mr. Logan, this is the first event after this, after the policy where there had already been pre-approved or pre-planned for something to take place? Is that accurate? Okay, thank you.
That was an affirmative from Mr. Logan. All right, Alderman Sistrung.
And my comfort level with extending those hours is because they've indicated that they're gonna have on-site security. Is that, that's correct, right?
Okay. All right, Alderman Little.
I'm going to stay consistent, as Vice Mayor has said on this, after the issues we had out there, after hours, and there's nothing derogatory against this group. I'm sure they do great things and probably a non-issue, but in keeping consistent, I have voted against every extension since we made that board resolution about a year, year and a half ago, I believe.
All right. Any other discussion? Any further discussion? All right, seeing that, if you would, let's do a roll call vote on this, and I'm sure we're gonna go. If you would, say yea or nay when the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Nay.
Alderman Walker.
Nay.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, by a vote of four to three, motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone. And that concludes our open session. We have a regular session. We have a, on the agenda, opportunity to go into executive session, and I need a motion for us to go into closed determination.
Oh, we're going to close session, Mayor?
I have a motion from Alderman Little to go into closed determination session. The second from, where did that second? Alderman Vaughn, thank you, sir. I have a second from Alderman Vaughn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If you would, please clear the room and allow us to make that determination about executive session.